I'll go ahead and call the Monday, October 20th, 2025 Board of Commissioners meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone here. We have a good crowd tonight and just want to welcome everyone here. And at this time, I will ask Vice Chairman Jones to provide the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
To those that can't be seen, Heavenly Father, we just thank you. We thank you for another week. We thank you for the opportunity to serve our community. We ask that things be done in decency and order. We ask for thoughts and prayers for those who've lost loved ones. We ask that you keep our first responders and our military uplifted. And we ask that we make choices and decisions that can be that have the greater good for our entire community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And tonight, we have some recognitions before we get started. We have the participants and winners of the disaster prepared art contest. So I'm going to ask Mr. Gary Crumpler if he'll come up. And let me tell you a little bit about this, and then I'll let you add to it, add your flavor, whatever I miss. So Cumberland County Emergency Services hosted the first annual disaster preparedness art contest to engage K through 12 students in learning about emergency through creative expression. The contest encouraged students to design artwork reflecting themes such as family emergency planning, weather safety, and community resilience. So Director Crumpler, would you like to add anything to that?
Good evening, Commissioners, Mr. Chairman. Again, like you said, it's our pleasure to be here tonight to recognize some young leaders, some young talent in our community. Us in Emergency Services, we're always searching for ways to engage the public, engage our youth, to help them learn about emergency preparedness. So right now, I'd like to turn it over to China Gao. She is the one that actually ran the contest to tell you a little bit more in detail about it and ask that a Commissioner help us present the awards to you.
I'll bring down a Commissioner. You beat me to the punch. I'll have Commissioner Tyson join you down at the podium, once Ms. Gao gives us an update or tells us a little bit more about the program.
Yeah, so thank you for having us, Chairman and Commissioners. So September was Disaster Preparedness Month, and a part of our initiative is always public outreach. And how can we really engage our youth in these conversations, especially with their family members and adults? So our goal was really to just engage the youth in learning about emergency preparedness in a fun and meaningful and hands-on way. And it also encouraged those important conversations. So we received a wonderful response from students all across the county. Their creativity, thoughtfulness, and understanding of what it means to be prepared truly impressed us. This year's contest included one round of public voting, and then after the public voting, we did one final vote within the Emergency Services Department. And I am excited to say that we have plaques to present to our winners and then certificates of appreciation to present to all of the participants.
Awesome. I'm going to ask Commissioner Tyson to join you down there. Would you like to do the introduction, or would you like me to?
I can.
You can break?
Yes, sir. All right. So at this time, I'd like to invite our contestant winners to come forward as I call your name to receive your plaque. So for our kindergarten through fifth grade categories, in third place, we had Logan Rosser.
Yep, up in there, Commissioner.
So in second place, we had Rhiannon Crumpler.
You can bring everybody up before you get to photo?
Yes, there you go. And then in first place, we have Callie Hutchinson. And then one of our participants, we also had Jacob Rosser. So I would also like to recognize, we did have one first place participant in our fifth through 12 category. Her name was Amira Whalen. Unfortunately, she was unable to make it. And then our additional participants, Blue Hanson, Imani Whitfield, Royal Wooten, Autumn Schuler, and Aiden Schuler, who were unable to make it today. So just please join me in giving a round of applause to all of these incredible students.
They all ran very quickly back to their seats.
But on behalf of Cumberland County Emergency Services, I just want to thank every student and parent who supported this initiative. Your participation helps us build a stronger connection with our youth and reinforces the message for preparedness and that it is a shared responsibility.
Thank you, Ms. Gao and Director Crumpler, for doing this, and more importantly, for engaging the youth in our community. It's a great, great idea, a great concept, and a great way to involve them in helping be prepared for the disasters or different things across this community. So thank you. Commissioner Tyson, you good?
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other comments? All right. Board, I'm going to take a privilege of the chair, and without objection, I'm going to move item 5D from...to...to presentation only, as there's no business action, and we can go ahead and let Dr. Green brief. And I'm sorry, 4...
4A.
I'm sorry. Did I give the wrong number?
4A.
4A, sorry. My apologies.
You move it where?
I'm going to move it to up front, to the presentations, where presentations would normally go. So we're going to go ahead and do that before the public comment period.
Can you be able to move it?
No, there's no action. There's no...it's just for information only.
That's correct.
So there's no action. So I figure we could move it forward in presentations, allow you to go ahead and go. And I'm sorry, it's actually 5A, maternal health, the doula program update. I knew it was an item up there, excuse me.
It's 4A.
It's 5A.
It's 5A. It's 5A on here. 5A. It's 5A on the sitting.
Yeah, that's what you see. That's the annual service.
I'm looking at the screen. It's on the portal itself, it's 5A. Anyway, the item is maternal health doula program update. So I'd like to move that forward as a presentation because there's no action, unless there's an objection from the board.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you so much for the opportunity to come before you today to talk about our doula program services and a pilot program that we launched about a year ago. So just a little bit by way of background, we know, we work hard in our community to address maternal health outcomes. And however, we know that statewide and nationally, there are wide disparities in those outcomes, and we know that different communities are impacted by our maternal health outcomes. And some of the ones that we look at are maternal mortality and infant mortality. The reasons behind that are often systematic, they're very complex, and it's not just one thing that really contributes to those poor maternal outcomes. So we proposed last year to invest in birth doula services as one of many strategies that we are implementing to have a positive impact on those outcomes. We pinpointed this because this is something that's been worked on quite a bit at the state level, and then also a service we know that is often not covered by health insurance. So this activity and project really aligns with your priorities as the Board of County Commissioners and our priorities as the Board of Health. So one of the priorities of the county commissioners, of course, is to enhance health and wellness, particularly around reducing infant mortality rates. The rates of infant mortality are not just impacted, or doula services are not just impacting maternal health outcomes, but they also impact the outcomes of the infant. And then we know there's a shortage of OB-GYNs in our community. And so this is one measure that can help to fill the gap as we try to address that strategy. The Board of Health also has priorities to expand our access to services in different and innovative ways, and then to encourage multi-sector partnership and collaboration. And then one of our community health assessment priorities is around maternal and infant health. So really nice alignment for this program with your priorities and the priorities of the community. Doula services have, is an evidence-based strategy. We know that individuals that receive doula services, research tells us, are less likely to have a C-section, lower rates of preterm birth, lower rates of a low birth weight for that baby. The mothers are less likely, or more likely to have a shorter labor and more likely to initiate breastfeeding. So in FY 2425, the Commissioners invested $150,000 to provide doula services. So last fall, this time last fall, we were issuing an RFP to do that, to fund two doula agencies, up to $75,000 each, for uninsured and underinsured women. And that underinsured part is really important because we often know that even if you have health insurance, that this is a service that's often not covered. So we awarded two agencies, Central Carolina Dulas and Divine Goddess Dulas, and they began their program services in January 2025. So these are services that we're going to report back on to you today to give you some quarter one and quarter two data. The requirements that they needed to implement, they had to hire experienced doulas. We wanted people that were already trained, ready to start implementing, to provide services for at least 30 women. And they needed, as a part of that service package, that includes at least three visits during pregnancy, a visit postpartum, within two days after birth, and then another one at least six weeks after birth. And then they also needed to participate with us on social determinants of health training, because we know that often maternal health outcomes are not just about baby, but about the family and the community that they live in. And then they meet with me quarterly to review their data, and then they also have an accountability factor to our perinatal task force, and they provide, they attend monthly, and then also provide quarterly updates to that group as well. So here's some of our Q1 through Q2 data. I'm going to give the caveat that this is all preliminary data. We have some moms that are enrolled but haven't given birth yet. So they'll be giving birth throughout the project period. So in terms of client demographics, so far, we've served 44 clients, and that's about 73% of their target. So at full capacity, they'll serve 60. Since then, since the end of that quarter, one of our doula services is already at capacity. So that's really great. We expected that to happen when word of the program got out. Our clients are racially and ethnically diverse and represented across the community in several key zip codes, where we know the rates of poor maternal health outcomes and infant outcomes are poor, including 28301 and 28304 and several others. We, importantly, as you, your commissioner priorities align with mental health and substance use, and a lot of the work of the Health Department, about 13 to 20% of our clients that we've served had some identified substance use or mental health disorder. So we really thought about this as an opportunity to build wraparound services in a way for these families that they might not have otherwise received. This is, I think, something that I wasn't expecting. Nearly all of our clients had health insurance, but their insurance didn't cover this. So this was partly not just an insurance issue, but an access even with insurance issue. So a couple of process and outcome measures, most of our clients exceeded the metrics that we had in place. So most had an average of three to four prenatal visits, and at least two to four postpartum visits, depending on which dual agency we were looking at. Nearly all of their visits were in those intimate spaces, so in their home, or they went alongside them with their provider, or they convened with them virtually. We had a few that really wanted that virtual visit, but most of those were in their homes. 21 of the clients that already gave birth were initiating breastfeeding, which was excellent. And 31 of our clients enrolled in WIC, and 14 of them had their infants enrolled in WIC. So a couple of things that we're going to look for in Q3, Q4, as the moms give birth, and we have more data to look at, we're going to do some comparisons for how many of them delivered via C-section, had a preterm birth, were induced, or if they had any other medical complications. So we're going to be taking a look at that data in the next couple of quarters. So a couple of challenges. So one of the things, when I meet with the doulas, we talk about their challenges. They noted significantly that these families experienced domestic violence, substance use, mental health disorders, lots of language and cultural barriers, housing, transportation, childcare. And our doulas did an excellent job of getting these families connected to resources. One of the things I was really proud of them is they leverage a lot of different resources and use their networks to get moms and families placed where they needed to be. We were able to leverage some of our other public health funding to help these families get blood pressure cuffs, car seats, other tangible bottles, onesies, help them get transportation to appointments where needed. And then we also added a doula component to our childbirth education class that we already provided at the Health Department. They also participated in our community health fairs, and then last week, they participated with our own staff in a home visitor safety training. So we, bigger than we ever even imagined, and able to build partnerships in ways that we hadn't really thought of at the beginning of the project, but we're grateful that they kind of went with us as we went along this journey. So a couple of next steps on your agenda today, we have, we hope to do a bid award for our 2026 doula services. They are continuing to engage with us as local providers, and how we can get our local providers to engage with our community-based doulas. And both agencies are on track to meet those 2025 numbers. And I'm happy to answer any questions for you all. Yes, ma'am.
Vice Chairman Jones, you're recognized.
Well, first of all, thank you for your work, Dr. Green, you and your team. And I actually have two questions in reference to this data. By any chance, were they able to capture that of how many percentage of minorities for number one, the age, number two, and that of your doulas, are they using any type of...utilizing any type of tool resource when you spoke of a language culture barrier to help them, I imagine, for individuals that speak Spanish or other languages? So those are my three questions.
I think I've got them. So on the demographic data, so one of our, across, we served individuals across all of those racial and ethnic demographics, the majority were African-American or identified as Hispanic. One of our doula is bilingual and provides services directly in Spanish. So that really helped to build that cultural barrier, or to break down that cultural barrier for many of those families. And then we have, we worked with them to get some resources translated for them. So we have our Hear Her campaign, and we are able to provide them our own resources at the Health Department through some grant dollars to help get some materials in front of them. But language continues to be a barrier for those primary languages that we don't really, that we use our mobile interpreters for at the Health Department. Our doulas don't necessarily have access to a mobile interpreter like we do at the Health Department. So we've tried to, where we can, if they have a visit at the Health Department, that mom, they will be able to leverage our resources. But language continues to be a barrier for us and for clients' access to those services. And then the age group, most of our moms were under the age of 35.
Thank you, Dr. Green.
Yes, ma'am.
So, thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Patel, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Green, thank you so much for kind of giving us an outlook of kind of where we've been, and hopefully the outcomes that we can look forward to. I do have a question on, because I know it's not just probably related to the Health Department, but the OB-GYN numbers, what's kind of the game plan for that? Because I know the hospital's also in the crunch, and the community as a whole.
Yeah, so that's a really good question. So one, I think it is a challenge that we're not going to solve one strategy. So when we started this about a year ago, we were really looking for strategies that we could implement quickly. So in between, by the time we start to recruit providers here, we needed some short-term solutions. So this program is one of them. We really are hopeful that the medical school will be, I knew you were going to know I was going to say that, but that the medical school will help to bring providers to our community. And so with, of course, with all of you, we work really closely with Methodist and Cape Fear to bring those practices, hopefully to bring those providers. But we're a couple of years out from that. And so I think in the interim, we've got to look from, to look, to think about how we can recruit providers to come here and wanting to serve in our community. And that's one of the things that we're working with our perinatal task force on, about what specialties. And then for those that are not served here, how do we make sure that we're not delaying prenatal care for those moms and getting them in and getting them to their appointment, and making sure they're going to their appointment when we do have providers. And our case managers also help to do that.
Thank you. Commissioner Tyson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Patel actually took my question, but that's okay. One other thing that I'd like, and thank you for what you do and for your department. I've had an opportunity with the Chairman to tour, and you were gracious enough to take us through that. So I know that y'all work on the business for the people every day. So thank you for that. One thing I'd like to highlight, too, is where you go for your outcomes and measures, I think it would be important to note that with the number of visits, it's not just, that's not overall. So obviously, if you have somebody that's in another program, you know, as you have these providers coming out and they're seeing, you know, things that need to happen, they're also being able to take advantage of those other programs. I just wanted you to kind of speak to that, because upon reading it, I don't want people to just think they're only getting three to four visits, and that's all they're getting touched before they have, you know, the birth.
Absolutely. So that's exactly right. So we might have a family that is enrolled in our doula program, but we have another program called our Healthy Start Program that serves from prenatal all the way to 18 months. So you might get services with our fatherhood coordinator. You might get a service with our postpartum home visitor. You might get a service with one of our family outreach workers in addition to these visits. So we want to make, and another touch point with our WIC visit. So we want to make sure that these families are being touched at every opportunity so that we don't, they don't fall through the cracks, and we're getting every wraparound service that's possible. So one of the things I was really proud of our team with this is to make sure that if we had a mom that was enrolled in this program, they got every access to every single service and made it really easy for these families to get access to those services at the Health Department.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Adams, you're recognized.
Dr. Green, you know, this has exceeded what we talked about. You know, we talked about the maternal health crisis that we have in this community. We had Dr. Nurstal Graham retiring. At that point, Dr. Strickland was in the process. He stopped. And we had young ladies not seeing a doctor the second trimester. And I thought this community, we believed that that was unacceptable.
Unacceptable.
But we didn't know what we were doing. So we, one of the things we talked about was this doula program, to be able to get it off the ground. It has exceeded, I think, any of the expectations that we did in that period of time. You know, the state child fatality rates just came out. They're high for North Carolina, they're high for Cumberland County, and I think that this is just one arsenal in the toolbox that
That's right.
we use to be able to hopefully help the citizens of this community to be able to do that. So hats off to you and your staff. You know, we come up with ideas, but it's staff to implement some. And so thank you so very much for what you all have done at the Health Department. I am truly, truly, I think this community's blessed.
We are very lucky. And most health departments don't have this. And we were, a few weeks ago, we went to our North Carolina Public Health Association conference, and one of the presentations was about doula services, and they were giving their outcomes. And I thought, we do that, we do that, we do that. And it was just very empowering to know that we have a service like this for our community members to take advantage of. And again, much appreciation to our two doula agencies that worked with us. This was a pilot. And so we, as Commissioner Adams said, we kind of went into it going, well, we're not really sure, we're going to kind of build it together. And they really have been patient with us and flexible in trying to make sure, and given us ideas about what really could be. So we are, I want to make sure that I give them many, many thanks for the work that they're doing, too.
And I'd just ask you to thank them on our behalf. We don't see them. There are a lot of things that go on this community that people don't know, but they stepped up when we needed them. And so hats off to them.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Dr. Green, first, thank
Dr. Green, first, thank you for your leadership. You know, this program that was invested last year by the previous board has obviously proven dividends, and I look forward to tonight to continuing those resources forward. I think what we saw with our doula community is flexibility is a key word in their, in their environment. So what a, what a great group to be able to work with through this process. I think what's very interesting as we continue to move forward with this is those wraparound services and that connection of resources and understanding those. And maybe, and I know you're data-driven anyway, but looking at those connection points and then, you know, how we can look outward for the resources and maybe connect them earlier on, or connecting to like trends with the same types of populations. Because it's very interesting when you talk about transportation and, and mental health and all the different intersections that it hit. So thank you for the work that you and your team have done. I thank you to the doulas as well, so.
Yes. And I, you know, we talked about the challenges. Those weren't, I don't think those are surprising to this board. These are the things that we saw in our community health assessment. These are things that we see every day at the Health Department, probably in every meeting that you all go to. These are the things that people talk about. And so our clients are not unique to that. They don't, they're not shielded from those concerns. So that wraparound service part is really important, too. So we appreciate the commissioners and your investment in this program. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Green.
We'll go ahead and move now to the public comment period, and I will ask County Manager Greer to read the public comment policy.
The public comment period should last no longer than fifteen minutes. Time may be extended at the discretion of the board. Each speaker will have a maximum of three minutes to make remarks until the fifteen-minute limit is attained. No time may be yielded by a speaker to another speaker. Speakers will be acknowledged by the board in the order in which their names appear upon the sign-up sheet. Speakers will address the board from the lantern and begin their remarks by stating their name and address. Public comment is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers will not discuss matters regarding the candidacy of persons seeking public office. Speakers will be courteous in their language and presentation. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. Written comments and/or supporting documents may be left with the clerk to the board.
Madam Clerk, if you will introduce the first speaker.
Robert Edwards, Jr.
How's everyone doing today?
Good evening.
All right. Sir, I'm told that you had a pretty extensive basketball career yourself, so. All right. Good evening, good evening, county commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Robert Lee Edwards, Jr., Veteran Chief War Officer II, United States Army. And I'm honored to serve as the team market owner of the Fayetteville Liberty, a new professional basketball franchise set to debut at the Crown Arena in March 2026. As you all are aware, the Crown Arena is, is the one entity in Cumberland County's most valuable asset. We are set to see the Liberty stick take place and maximize impact in that facility. Over the years, the Crown has hosted major concerts, family entertainment, and high-profile sporting events. Now, bringing professional basketball to the Fayetteville, we have the opportunity to create consistent, high-energy events that will boost tourism, support local businesses, and position Cumberland County as a premier sports destination. It's important to note that we are not building this team alone. We already have strong community and corporate partners standing with us. This includes Cavernous and Cates, one of North Carolina's leading home builders investing in Fayetteville's growth, Wawa, a beloved convenience and food brand expanding in its presence in our region, PWC, the Public Works Commission powering Fayetteville's future through sustainability, innovation, and community support, Tropical Smoothie of Cameron, North Carolina, promoting health, living, and active lifestyles, Shuttle Buddy, providing transportation solutions and fans, for our, for our fans and family members, Jerome Scott, the insurance guy, supporting our financial security and community well-being, Build Better Youth, a nonprofit-focused and mentorship of empowerment, Distinctly Fayetteville, elevating our city as the sports and tourism destination, Fayetteville Chamber of Commerce, connecting the liberty with our region's business and ecosystem, United Way of Cumberland County, uniting the liberty with causes that uplift families and strengthen our community, and Yellow Crown of Fayetteville, our creative agency powering our branding and apparel distribution. This lineup represents more than just financial support. It represents belief. It reflects broad confidence in the, in the Fayetteville Liberty and what it means to our community as a symbol of unity, opportunity, and pride. Our mission is simple, to give Fayetteville and Cumberland County a team they can truly call their own, a team that brings together families, military families, local businesses, and civic organizations around a shared vision, hope, and community. As we prepare for our tip-off in March 2026, we look forward to closely working with our county, the Crown Arena, and you, our city and our leadership, to make the Fayetteville Liberty a success that uplifts the entire region. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak with you all today. One, two, three, Hope, four, five, six, community.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
Yes.
Do you have a website?
Yes, sir. www.faylibertync.com.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, if you'll call the next speaker.
Mark Berg. Mark Berg.
Madam Clerk, if you'll call the next speaker.
Charlie Grimes.
And you have an extra copy there for this distinguished young man sitting right here. Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
Mr. Chair. Charlie L. Grimes, Jr., 39, 18, Colorado Drive, Hope Mills, North Carolina. My reason for coming to your board is that my wife Irene and I own several properties on University Avenue, a small side street off of Camden Road. Donut hole, I think you got it, right? I call it the bacon strip. It's just one strip of street down there that doesn't have utilities on it. All of these properties have relied on private wells and septic systems that were installed several decades ago. I've, I've provided each one of you now with a map, so you can see the location of those particular properties. Our side of the street is marked in yellow, relies on the, in the Cumberland County. The opposite side of the street is colored in orange, is within the town, the limits of Hope Mills. One of our neighbors lives on the corner of Camden and University, and he's already got public utilities. He's just two hundred and twenty-four feet from our properties. Across the street, new condominiums are being built, and their zoning requires connection to public water and sewage, of course. Now, to be clear, we have no concerns with the developers. Our concern is with PWC. We have been advocating for years to have properties connected to public utilities. Yet, we continue to be told, as recently as last week, that there are no plans to extend service to our side of the street. Meanwhile, our wells and septic systems are aging, requiring more frequent maintenance, posing an increasing risk of eventual failure. It simply isn't fair that one side of University Avenue will have access to public utilities while the other side does not, especially in a growing urban area where infrastructure already exists just a few hundred feet away. Beyond fairness, there are legitimate public health reasons and safety environment concerns that could be coming from an aging private system in a developing corridor. Oops.
Go ahead and finish your thoughts.
We would like for you to help us, if you can, get water and sewage across the street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Madam Clerk, we call the next speaker.
There are no more speakers.
All right. At this time, we'll close the public comment period, and we will move to item two, approval of the agenda. County Manager Greer, any changes for the agenda?
Yes, Chairman Dever, there's one change. We would like to pull item five, five D, reconsideration of the appointment of Tracy Pel to the board at Social Services.
All right. Commissioners, are there other changes to the agenda?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones, you're recognized.
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to make an amendment change to add two proclamations, one for WIDU anniversary, their sixty-seventh anniversary, and one proclamation for WIDU, their faith base enhancement towards, support towards the faith base with women for their Women Luncheon Empowerment. So two different, both for WIDU radio station, but they're two different proclamations.
Commissioners, have them on their dais in front of them, correct?
That is correct, for review. To be presented at the Thursday sixty-seventh anniversary luncheon to take place at the expo here in Fayetteville, North Carolina.
And you want to move those on the consent agenda?
Yes, please move those to the consent agenda.
Commissioners, any other changes to the agenda or requested changes?
Mr. Chairman, the county manager asked me about, were you talking about a personnel section after this closed session?
Yes.
Another meeting.
We do need a closed session, but we need to make the paragraph, instead of eleven A three, it needs to be eleven A six.
I think we'll have both of those, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, well, we'll have both of them, based on the advice of the attorney.
Okay, so we'll add a closed session as well. Any other changes to the agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Vice Chairman Jones.
I make a motion to approve the agenda with the changes as requested, both for the proclamation as well as that for the closed session, as stated by the attorney as well as our town manager.
Second the motion, and the removal of item five D.
I'm sorry, thank you. Yes, and the removal of item five D. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
There's been a motion to approve the agenda with changes. Any discussion or questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
We'll go ahead and move to item three, consent agenda. Commissioners, are there any changes to the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Vice Chairman Jones.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second. So motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
And we'll go ahead and move to item four, the public hearings. County Manager Greer, if you'll read the rules and procedures for the public hearings.
Yes, arguments by the proponents and opponents should be limited to a maximum of ten minutes per each side. If there's no group representative, each speaker shall be allotted a maximum of three minutes until the ten-minute time period is attained. Rebutts will only be permitted at the discretion of the chairman with a maximum of one three-minute presentation by each side.
Item A is, four A is the adoption of the Northeast Cumberland Land Use Plan. County Manager Greer.
Yes, on our October ninth agenda session, we had a presentation regarding the Northeast Cumberland Land Use Plan. Ross Howard, Director of Planning and Inspection, would present this item and answer any questions you may have for the formal approval of the plan. Ross.
Thank you very much, County Manager Greer. Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
So I'll try to make this as quick as possible. I have the presentation that we went over through the agenda session. That's the only reason I'm saying that. So I mean, so I'm just going to go through the presentation and just go over any kind of small modifications that we made as a result of the discussion that we had on the night. So again, it's my pleasure to stand before you for this plan, which encompasses the, the furthest northeast regions of Cumberland County, which also include the towns of Wade, Godwin, and Falcon. So the areas you can see highlighted on the, on the map is bordered by Hornet County, Sampson County, generally speaking, the town of Eastover, Interstate 295 and the Cape Fear River. The plan itself is, covers approximately thirty-three thousand acres of the county with about a twenty-nine hundred residents within that area. When you look at the existing future land use map that we had for this area, this is the plan that has stood the test of time that we've had. You can see that there's a multitude of different types of land use classifications from industrial to various types of density of residential and agriculture, weighed against the current zoning. So on the left-hand side, you can look at it as, that's our policy of growth when we make decisions. The right-hand side is the regulatory of when the, when, you know, like the rubber hits the road, so to speak, that's what the zoning is out there, which is majority, a lot of that is agricultural and rural by zoning, right? When you look at the proposed future land use map against the existing, we did make some changes. We honored a lot of what the feedback that we heard from these citizens and the community out there. As you can see here, we've kind of shifted away a lot of some of like the manufacturing here, but we've actually included a little bit higher density areas for housing and residential uses. I'm sorry. A little bit heavy finger there, so. Boiling it down to what the future land use classifications are in the new map, about, I would say, two-thirds of this entire area, as you can see, fifty-six percent and thirty-one percent on the left-hand side of that chart, basically allocated for some sort of rural agriculture or rural density residential, which is kind of indicative of what you see of the zoning out there currently now. So just some of the classifications that you see for our residential areas, you have the rural agriculture, you can see the corresponding districts. Now, the town of Godwin, Falcon, and Wade are going to have different corresponding districts because they're towns, and we're the unincorporated area. But this is what the towns wanted for their jurisdictions. So as you can see, the associated zoning districts, A1, R40, generally for rural agriculture, and it starts to get denser from there. When you look at the rural density residential here, you're looking primarily R40, R30, maybe some R20. And then when you get further down here through the suburban density residential, you're looking solidly in half-acre lots to R30. So we had a sort of a blend there of different types of land use classifications for this area. Some further considerations is, we did address some density goals, primarily trying to be able to include things that in the future, we're going to look at conservation subdivisions, and how do you look at putting more density in an area while trying to preserve a lot of the open space. And then, of course, we have the state watershed rules that we have to abide to as well. So we included some stipulations and policies related to that. Now, if I'm going too fast, please, you can tell me to slow down, and I'll be glad to elaborate. We have some considerations for Rhodes Pond and the Avarice Borough Battlefield. We did, listen, Commissioner Adams, I think you brought something up at the agenda session. We did make those changes in this plan related to the extension of utilities, and just, you know, to take that in consideration with the sensitivity of the, of the area out there when we are trying to be able to build houses out there. But we did make those changes, and those changes are in the draft, and I can go over those if you wish, but we did make those. Some of the land use goals and objectives, open space. Everybody likes to have more open areas, so we have some goals and objectives related to that, promoting rural agricultural uses to protect prime farmland, and of course, balancing that out with any type of future residential growth. We have goals for that. And then some commercial goals in certain areas within the pockets of this area, not commercial everywhere, but generally in certain areas, which goes against the future land use map that I showed you earlier. Some community goals and objectives. We've touched on transportation, community appearance, trying to be able to preserve a lot of the rural design features and the landscaping for the area out there, and then facilities and services, to try to be, expand some of the recreational opportunities and to integrate infrastructure with the growth plans, which we did. I will point out that we did have the utilities as a part of the conversation in this plan development. They were part of our team. We coordinated with them extensively, and, and the existing future, or the future land use map that you see here is indicative of that conversation. So. Some of the recommendations, won't go through all of this. Largely, what you're seeing here is what we heard resoundingly from the towns, and this area out here was agricultural preservation weighted with the amount of growth that we need for housing. So you have a lot of folks out there that like the larger lots, like the rural feel. That hasn't changed a lot from any of the other plans that we've had recently with a lot of the community out there. And that, and that has echoed with Godwin, Falcon, and Wade as well. We had a very profound community engagement with this plan. So we sent postcards out to basically every property owner in the general area. We also had a significant amount of community input meetings. I can just go off here. The kickoff meeting, we had eighty-two folks show up. We had, we did a value survey. So we had fifty-two value surveys were submitted by the community. We had a extensive, and extensive, and very professionally done, in my opinion, a separate website for the online engagement throughout the entire process. We did questionnaires, and then we had a public engaged, a public engagement draft review session where the community got a chance to come out and make further comments as we were getting further along in that were getting further along in that process. So, very, very involved. We did include the towns of Godwin, Falcon, and Wade. I will point out that at their respective town board meetings, all of those towns have unanimously adopted this plan as it was submitted to you. We got a lot of resounding attaboys from them, saying that we did a really good job and we're very happy with the amount of input we got from their citizens as well. So, just some general town of Godwin goals, what you're seeing for a lot of these smaller towns is they just want to preserve their way of life. Same thing for the town of Falcon, you see here, encourage preservation of historical and cultural sites, maintaining the town's low-density rural setting while protecting agricultural and natural lands. If I had to sum up all three of them, I would say that was probably a sentence that you could use that in. And then the town of Wade is the same thing, just trying to promote a balanced system of development through intentional growth and preserve their character. So, with that being said, I try, again, I try to keep that as short as possible, but I'll try to answer any questions if you have at this point.
Commissioners, questions before we open up the public hearing? Commissioner Tyson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to take a moment to thank you for incorporating those changes that we had requested into this. I know you and your staff have put a lot of hard work into making sure that you've reached out to the community, so I just wanted to personally thank you for making those changes and so it's very precise and I appreciate that. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Adams, you're recognized.
You know, I always, I did have, I thought your language was very good that I brought up at the agenda setting, but I will take you again back to the Rhodes Pond, and on ours, it's 45, page 45, I don't know what it is on.
I've got a hard copy of it right here.
Okay. So, the only issue I have is that if you look at where it says limited development and you use the word prohibit, which means you can't do it at all, as opposed to discourage or do that, these are people's properties that might be near here and for us to prohibit, and I don't like the large-scale commercial, so I could probably deal with that, but there are some, all around Rhodes Pond, there are some people who own lots around there, and if we're going to prohibit residential development, I don't know that we want to use the word prohibit, because that means I'm going to vote no all the time because it won't be consistent with the plan if we do, if we put prohibit on there, as opposed to maybe discourage or some other word that we use.
Yeah, so the language that we use for this particular one, like the one that I have here, that should be in your draft, if it's not, then I can, I can go to page 46. We really tried to get away from that. So, what we did is under the Rhodes Pond section, which is a section that's right, you know, that we went over here just a little bit ago, I'll see if I can make it go back. So, we got rid of the sections that were basically saying that we want to discourage any type of the, like, utility section, so the last bullet that we have in the new draft says, "Any proposed sewer and water extensions near Rhodes Pond should be evaluated to balance compatibility with the area's natural and environmental sensitivity and desired growth for the area."
And I'm fine with that.
Okay.
But if you go to limited development, which must be the next page, the next one up.
Okay. You said page 46?
It's 45 on our sheet.
Okay.
Where it says limited development.
Okay.
You got the word prohibit, large-scale commercial, industrial, and residential development. I thought the other language was fine, but to say prohibit means it won't ever happen. And I know that there are some lots around on the backside of Rhodes Pond, whether it can be developed or not, because I know the baggage on some there and all of them, so prohibit is such a hard word that means you can't do it, as opposed to discourage, discourage that large-scale commercial. I think people ought to be able to kind of utilize their land a little bit in terms of zoning if they come in here with a good plan.
So, if you want, I mean, so we can change that with this adoption here tonight, if you want to just put discourage there.
Everybody's trying to find it.
Can you direct us on where it is, if we're looking at the packet?
Okay.
Just so that we can bring a reference.
I think for ease of use, if you got it, it's the page that has the wildlife resources page, it's really big on it.
Right.
As an identifier.
Right.
So, prohibit detached signage?
No, over where it says limited development on the right side.
Oh, prohibit large-scale commercial.
Yeah, which is recommendation, and it says to prohibit large-scale commercial, industrial, and residential development in the area. And I think you prohibit such a finite word as opposed to discourage or whatever word we can use.
Okay.
Because some of those folk have some properties out there that they bought, maybe thinking that they were going to be able to develop, I don't know what it's zone just yet, I guess, but I think if we change that prohibit to maybe discourage.
Okay.
Or something to that effect, I'm just one person, that would be my recommendation.
Staff wouldn't have a problem with that, if you want to do that, and you can do that as a part of this adoption if you want. It's not a problem.
Is that okay with everybody?
Well, we'll make the motion again.
Well, I just make a motion that we changed.
Let's not make a motion yet, we've got to go through public hearing. But understand the change. Anything else, Commissioner Adams?
That's it, thank you.
Vice Chairman Jones, questions before we go to public hearing?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to know, can you elaborate just a little bit where it says flux area, and that is on for the rest of the Commissioners? Page 34, and it states, "Flex areas are designated in locations where existing conditions such as underdeveloped or traditional spaces." Can you just elaborate a little bit or give an example of what an example would be in the flex area criteria? It's on our page, does it say associate zoning districts with Godwin and Wade?
Yeah, so the flex areas, we use those in the Spring Lake Plan as well, too, it's for those areas that are, that have so much land that staff, when we went through the discussion with the citizens out there, that if you're talking about 1,000 acres or 500 acres or something like that, it's basically a situation where if somebody wanted to request a rezoning, I think everybody could broadly agree that if it's in a general category of commercial or some sort of non-residential, that it would be looked at when it came in. So, essentially, say, for example, if you have 500 or 600 acres, it's a massive amount of land that you can't assign one of these little districts to, right, or these little classifications to. If somebody were to come and say, "I want to put like a manufacturing operation out here," and that's listed as generally one of the accepted districts, it's kind of like planting a flag on that 500 acres, which then at that point, if it gets approved by this board, could set the tone for how we could be able to grow that 1,000 acres or 600 acres, whatever that amount of land is, in the future as you get more of those types of decisions. So, it's really going to be more of a market-based approach of how we handle the planning for that particular large size as compared to a prescriptive government type of allocation to it. That's really what it's meant to be. I hope that answers your question.
Go ahead, follow.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just to follow up with that, I thought it was similar to that, so that, and I know that a lot of preservation, as you were stating, individuals in those areas are concerned about not too much growth, so that would still apply, like, say, since it is a large land and whatnot, if somebody wanted to come in and put in a apartment development, the same concept, you know, would have to go through approval first, correct?
Yeah, absolutely, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments before we move to the public hearing? Hearing none, at this time, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers on this item?
There are no speakers.
We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, are there any other questions or discussions on this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Faircloth.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I make the motion, I want to be clear on how to incorporate Commissioner Adams's proposed change into this. Can the county attorney help us out a little bit?
I think the language that Ms. Adams is suggesting is that using the word prohibit, discourage, certainly is guidance instead of prescription. I think the issue with it is what I heard it say, you're prohibiting heavy commercial or about three things there, I'm not sure that that was the intent, because I heard Ms. Adams say also he was okay with commercials, fortunately.
Mr. Chair, do you think we need two separate motions for that, or what do you think?
I think we can do one, just accept it with the changes as noted. Board's okay with that?
Okay, well, at this, at this time, I would move that we adopt the Northeast Central Land Use Plan as modified and as, well, as modified, sorry, as modified, which is what we were doing to begin with, and also with, to incorporate the change as suggested by Commissioner Adams.
Second the motion. So, we have a motion to adopt the Central Land Use Plan with the modification on page 45 of the document, reference to Rhodes Pond. It's been properly seconded. Are there any questions or discussion on the motion?
This is Northeast Plain.
I'm sorry, yeah, Northeast.
Yes.
It's, Mr. Chairman, just so that there's no question about it, that would simply be the change of the word prohibited to discouraged. Is that correct?
Commissioners, are we okay with the word discourage or limit?
I like limit, Mr. Chair.
Limits, man.
Okay, so with the modification to change the word prohibit, large-scale commercial, that sentence to limit.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, are we, any other questions or comments on that motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
All right, and we'll go ahead and move to item 4B, street naming, SN 0508. County Manager Greer.
Yes, I'll turn this one over to Ross Howard, Director of Planning and Inspection. Of course, we have a street with the same name, and Ross, how tall do you?
Thank you. Yeah, so this case is SN 0508. We get these probably once every couple of years. In this particular case, this case was given to us by emergency services who had recognized a deficiency in our E911 system, so this is essentially just cleaning up a naming. So, as you can see by the highlighted star, this is sandwiched in between the city of Fayetteville and Spring Lake. What had happened is, it was identified that there is a Jacob Street that is currently in the city of Fayetteville. We have a Jacob Street that's also highlighted right there. As you can see, it's actually the blue, let me see if I can get my little arrows, this blue curved linear kind of hooks around this area. We reached out to the city of Fayetteville, asking if they would be willing to change it in the city limits, they were not favorable to that, so we're going to go to the county side and try to change it on our end. So, we sent the letters out, per our policy and our process, we sent out 20 property owners were contacted, we sent, as I said, 20 letters, we received back 12 letters, and there were, out of those 12, we had nine votes for Jacob Evans Street. And I know I have one of the property owners and I think the family members of Mr. Jacob Evans, who was out here, who had spoken to speak in favor, but, so, that got the decisive vote. So, for those of you that don't know the process for street naming, it's sort of a back and forth. When we go out there, we will give out names to, that are in our database, these are randomized names, but if somebody out there has a name that they want, they can include that, and then it's a series of back and forth with mailing and then like the letters for voting of the, of the people who live out there. So, Jacob Evans won out for that one. So, this is standing at the north end of the entrance to Jacob, or what will be Jacob Evans, you can see the street sign out here, per the state statutes for public notification requirements, and this is the south end, and you can see the hook that kind of goes around that leads back to the other side. So, staff does recommend approval of the request, so happy to entertain any questions if you have any.
Commissioners, questions before we open the public hearing? Commissioner Patel, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, thank you, Ross, for giving us the breakdown. Is that the street naming process, is that locally governed, or is that process dictated through state statute?
I think it's authorized to some degree with state statutes, but we do have our own internal process. I think we fine-tune a lot of the state statute requirements for how the street naming needs to be done. Like, for example, there has to be a public hearing, we have to go post it, we have to send out letters, just like you would say, for example, like a zoning hearing, and that's what we do. And then, as I stated before, when we send those letters out, we have a randomized sort of naming database that we work with E911 on. We will typically, we'll send out three names, and more often than not, when somebody doesn't come back with their own specific name, they'll just circle the name they want, and then as we get the letters in, whichever, I mean, it's just straight up, you know, like whoever gets the most votes, that's what we recommend to you as a board, and that's what we bring forward. Yeah, so in this particular case, we have an overwhelming amount of people out there had recommended their own name, and so we went with that.
Commissioner Patel, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to note that as this request came from our emergency services or consolidate, or PSAP, I know that this is going to be important, that we look at this and this instance and others as we look to move towards consolidation, because first responder response to street addresses and addresses in general is very important. So, I would just like to make sure the board highlights that and notes that, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments before we move to the public hearing? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, please call any speakers.
Leomi Harrington.
Hi, my name is Leomi Harrington, Leomi Evans Harrington, as a matter of fact. And first of all, I'd like to thank Ms. Green, because she walked me through this process and made it very easy and explained it, and I was able to explain it to the neighbors. My grandfather was Jacob Benjamin Evans, and that land used to be his farm, and I remember it as being a strawberry farm, a peanut farm, a tobacco farm, and I was one of the workers on that farm. And my brother now Vincent Evans attempt now to do the justice that my grandfather did do then. But because of Highway 295, it has caused a split in our family property, and we would like to, as a sentimental value to us, to allow us to name that street Jacob Evans, to commemorate him and all that he had wanted to do. He did have the desire to make that a community. As a matter of fact, he took some of the land and he made plots of land and put homes on it and sold it to our black neighbors. And most of the people who are on that street now, they knew him. They are descendants of some of the people that bought the land, but they knew him. They knew him as also Reverend Jacob Evans. What also the 295 did was he could establish a church, and the church got moved and it separated us from our cemetery. We had to go through a whole new community to get to the cemetery. So, out of the sentiment for us, if you would name it Jacob Evans, we would love it. Now, we would have Josie, our grandmother, one street and Jacob him on another. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, are there any other speakers?
There are no more speakers.
We'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. Commissioners, are there any further questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Faircloth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, it gives me pleasure to move to approve the street name change from Jacob Street to Jacob Evans Street.
Second the motion. We have a motion to approve the street name change. It's been properly seconded. Any discussion or questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and move to item five, items of business, and we'll go ahead and move to item B, consideration of Phase Two of the unhoused support center. Now, call on County Manager Greer.
Yes, I'll turn this over to Heather Skene, Assistant County Manager, to present this item, answer any questions you may have regarding the next steps for the unhoused support center.
Good evening, Commissioners. I have a host of folks here with me this evening, Charles Boni and Bob Presley with LS3P, and Jonathan Best, Ed Green with Bar &amp; Bar, and Mr. Gilmore also, who helps with our workforce development on this project. So, most of these slides you've already seen, and this is just a very high-level overview of where we are, and I presented this at the agenda session last week. So, this is our timeline that we developed, we completed Phase One, we submitted those results to the board on August 11th. Phase One was approved at that date, and we also talked about the extension of Bar &amp; Bar contract on August 11th. Phase Two for this unhoused support center really focuses on taking those renderings, which I'll show you in a minute, and creating those schematic designs, looking at those documents, and developing them further, and then also looking at preparation of those construction documents, and then finally, LS3P, as our architect, would be looking at site evaluation and work and providing reports to us on how that progress is going. Just a high-level cost estimate at 17 million for the building. Again, an overview of the spaces in the building. I would note at the bed count, under the previous committee, we talked about less bunk beds and more single beds, and so we could change this or increase this bed count up if we went to more bunk beds, so that is an option, but that would be part of the schematic designs and really delving into what we want the bed capacity to be in this facility. into what we want the bed capacity to be in this facility. So we presented two renderings, the intersecting forms. Again, we presented this back in August. And then the carved courtyards. And so these are just renderings of what the building could look like. There is no set point at this point in terms of what the building will look like. It's just renderings. High-level summary of the two buildings in comparison. And then we're looking for this evening approval to move on to Phase Two, so we can begin to move into schematic designs. And then with that, we would need to approve the contract, Second Amendment, for LS3P. Certainly happy to answer any questions. And again, I have the experts here with me who can answer questions also.
Commissioners, questions on this item? Hearing none, I will go ahead and entertain a motion. Vice Chairman Jones, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve Phase Two through schematic designs only, adjust the AIA, and Second Amendment to reflect limitation, legal review first, and authorize the signature.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman. I just want to ask the Vice Chair if she'll add one small detail. I believe ACM Skeens had sent us out a breakdown by item. And if we can just add what the amount was for schematic design to the final contract that's signed.
I'll restate that motion. Thank you, Commissioner Tyson. I make a motion, and therefore, that we will approve Phase Two through schematic designs only, adjust the AIA. We will add in, as you stated, that of the breakdown of the prices that we were asked, requested to review, also to reflect limitations, legal review, and authorize signature.
Second motion. So we have a motion on the floor to approve Phase Two through schematic design, adjust the AIA, Second Amendment, to reflect this limitation with the cost noted, through legal review again, and then authorize Chairman's signature. It's been properly seconded. Is there a discussion or questions on this motion? Hearing none, I'll entertain your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
Is there further discussion or motion on these, on this item? Vice Chairman Jones, you recognize?
Yes, I'd like to make an additional second motion at this time.
You have the floor, Vice Chairman.
Thank you, yes. I'd also like to make a motion to have direction for the staff to identify alternate sites for the unhoused support center that can accommodate the square footage and footprint, also as approved in Phase One, and to bring this back to our committee, meaning the unhoused committee meeting in November.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion to have staff identify an alternate sites for the unhoused support center that can accommodate the square footage and footprint as approved in Phase One, and to bring that back to the committee, unhoused committee meeting in November. It's been seconded. Is there a discussion on this motion or questions? Commissioner Faircloth, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I recall, it's been a couple of years. We were looking at this particular site. And one of the big selling points was FTCC's involvement with training at that location. And it's my understanding that they've moved that back on campus. And so it may, so I understand the motion where it's coming from. It has something to do with probably that lack of involvement by FTCC. Plus, there may be other locations that are available. The question I really have is, by approving the schematic design, is this, and maybe the architects can answer this question, is that to make this, I mean, will this design fit on another site if we choose another site? Is that the plan?
ACM Skeens or architects?
So the intention would be that we would look for a site that would fit the design, the square footage, and the schematic design also.
Okay, so we don't have to come back and reinvent this wheel?
Correct.
Thank you. That was my question.
Vice Chairman Jones, you recognize?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you for your comments, Commissioner Faircloth, because that is correct. After receiving news and resource of that, of the information you just stated around FTCC, and that of also, to be quite frank, I've still been getting several emails from individuals in the community on B Street. And I just feel like, at this point in time, and that of also our homeless, those that we are trying to provide these services for, making sure accommodations and making sure that they can have the best resources, and perhaps, again, looking at opportunity for other options feasible for them to be able to be, able to look at, you know, just different options for resources, and just all of that that's already been stated today, FTCC. So I feel that it is worth that direction for the staff to explore, again, with the same square footage and footprint as being in approval in Phase One.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments on the motion? Just one clarifying thing. FTCC, through the HOPE program, is still conducting training for the unhoused population. They just do it on campus now, and so they'll still be in partnership with us. I just want to make sure that's clarified. Hearing no other questions or comments, I will ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Voting in favor, Commissioner Tyson, Vice Chairman Jones, Chairman DeVeere, Commissioner Patel, and Commissioner Faircloth. Voting in opposition, Commissioner Adams.
Are there any other discussions on this item? Commissioner Tyson, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, as you may recall, during our August 11th meeting, I had brought up having a discussion about our provider for this facility. And I'd like to give our county manager and staff credit. They took that guidance from the board and moved forward with that. And so what I would like to do now at this time is that, since that RFP has come back, and we've gotten that information, I would like to make a motion that the staff take that information, provide us a recommendation for a center provider, and that the staff also provides us an estimated operational budget to come back to the unhoused committee in November.
Is there a second?
Second.
We've got a motion to, from Commissioner Tyson, to provide a recommendation for the center provider and estimated operational budget to bring back to the committee, unhoused committee in November. It's been seconded. Any discussion or questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
Are there any other, any other discussions on this item? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and move to item C, 5C, consideration of TDA resolution to establish eligibility requirements for hotel or motel representatives appointed to the TDA. County Manager Greer, you recognize?
Yes, I'll turn this over to Rick Morfield, County Attorney, to present the answering questions that you may have.
Board members, this was presented to the agenda session October the night, and the language was actually to approve and adopt the TDA's resolution to be the policy of the Board of Commissioners for these appointments. The resolution is attached, and basically, the TDA has adopted as its policy that the folks it nominates to the Board of Commissioners for appointment to the Tourism Development Authority will be either owners, officers, or directors of a hotel or motel operating in the county and residing in the county. And they define who would constitute an owner, officer, or director. The resolution goes on to say that they will, the TDA itself, will only nominate to the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners those sorts of nominees. And it was requesting that the Cumberland Board of Commissioners is urged to only consider those nominees as defined therein, to serve as a nominee for, to be considered for appointment.
Commissioners, questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Patel, you recognize?
Thank you, Chairman. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve and adopt the TDA resolution to, as a policy of the Board of Commissioners for appointment to the Tourism Development Authority.
Second the motion. We have a motion to approve and adopt the TDA resolution as a policy of the Board of Commissioners for appointment to the TDA. It's been properly seconded. Just as a point and a reminder, that was stated in our previous meeting, the board can ultimately make any decision they want. This is a resolution from the TDA, so that we have some agreement and understanding between the two boards. Any discussion or questions on this motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Voting in favor, Commissioner Tyson, Vice Chairwoman Jones, Chairman DeVeere, Commissioner Patel, and Commissioner Faircloth. Voting in opposition, Commissioner Adams.
This time, we'll move to item six, nominations. Just a little background, on Thursday, October 9th, the Board and Commissioners Committee, consisting of Chairman DeVeere, Vice Chairman Jones, Commissioner Counsel, Commissioner Patel, Commissioner Tyson, met to discuss the nominations for the Boards and Commissions. Commissioner Counsel was not present for the entire meeting. The committee reviewed all the previous applicants and new applicants. These move forward to the October 20th meeting for nomination and appointment. The Boards and Commissioners that receive additional nominations during this meeting will move to the November 3rd, 2025, meeting for appointments. This timeframe allows for applicants to be completed and processed, applications to be completed and processed. Boards and Commissions that do not require additional nominations will be appointed at the October 20th meeting, which is tonight. Are there any questions from the board before we begin the nomination process? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and start with Animal Services, and I'll ask the Vice Chairwoman to read the nominees.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nominees for Animal Services, that's going to be, there's three vacancies on Animal Service Board nominees. And we, knowledge and experience in dog behavior or handling, position one vacancy, Joseph Stefanz. And then on the city of Fayetteville resident positions, there's two vacancies. And the names are Brittany Lee, Jill Baker, and Brian Taylor.
Board, are there any additional nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I have one for the knowledge and experience.
You recognize, Commissioner Adams?
I'm sorry. Cynthia Yarborough.
Can you say that one more time?
L U C I A N A Yarborough. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other nominations? Without objection, the named nominees will move to the November 3rd meeting for appointment. Madam Chair, Madam Clerk, if you will ensure that the application process for Ms. Yarborough's is, she gets the information. We'll go ahead and move to item B, Child Protection Futility Prevention Team. Call on Vice Chairman Jones to read the nominees.
Thank you, yes. Nominees, parent of a child who died prior to their 18th birthday. There's one vacancy. There's two names, Echo Farley and Angelina Smith.
Commissioners, are there any other additional nominees? Hearing none, without objection, the named nominees will move forward for an appointment vote in item seven of this meeting. Go ahead and move to item C. I'll ask the Vice Chairwoman to read the nominees.
Nominees, item C, Tyler Patton and also Jonathan Profit. That's two, that's for the two vacancies on the Cumberland County Industrial Facilities and Popul- Population Control Financing Authority. That's what those two names are for.
Are there any additional nominations from the Commissioners? Hearing none, without objection, the named nominees will move forward for an appointment vote in item seven of this meeting. Go ahead and move to item D, Farm Advisory Board. I ask the Vice Chairman to read the nominees.
There's one vacancy on the Farm Advisory Board. And at this time, for the nominees, in reference to the Natural Resource Conservation, Soil and Water Representative, Kevin Riddle.
Commissioners, are there additional nominees? Hearing none, without objection, the named nominee will move forward for an appointment vote in item seven of this meeting. Go ahead and move to the next item, FTCC Board of Trustees. I'll ask the Vice Chairman to read the nominees.
Yes, for FTCC, Fayetteville Technical Community College Board of Trustees, there's one vacancy for that particular Board of Trustees. Nominees, one vacancy name, is Jason Thicke.
Vice Chairman, you recognize?
Yes, I'd like to also add another name, Dr. Vicky Andrews.
Commissioners, are there additional nominees? Commissioner Adams, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. She did. I was going to be Dr. Andrews.
Commissioners, any other nominees? Without objection, the named nominees will move to the November 3rd meeting for appointment. We'll go ahead and move to item F, Home and Community Block Care Grant Committee. Vice Chairman Jones, I ask you to read the nominees.
Yes, there are three vacancies on the Home and Community Block Care Grant Committee. Nominees are as follows. Older consumers, two vacancies. The names are as follows, Barbara Brooks, Steve Clark, and William Taverne. There's one vacancy for the Civic Representative, and the name of nominee is Kevin Lynch.
Commissioners, are there additional nominations? Hearing none, without objection, the named nominees will move for an appointment vote in item seven of this meeting. Go ahead and move to item G, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. I'll ask Vice Chairman to read the nominees.
Yes, there are three particular vacancies on the Park and Recreation Advisory Board, and the nominees are as follows. Britt Schafers, Stephen Harper, and Lee Spurrow.
Commissioners, are there additional nominations? Hearing none, without objection, the named nominees will move for an appointment vote in item seven of this meeting. We'll go ahead and move to the next item, item H, Senior Citizens Advisory Commission. I'll ask the Vice Chairman to read the nominations.
Yes, we have seven vacancies on the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee. Nominees are as follows. Joyce Adams, Steve Clark, Sharon Lippert, Kevin Lynch, Dwight Palmer, Linda Talafaro, and Westina Williams.
Commissioners, are there additional nominations? Hearing none, without objection, the named nominees will move for an appointment vote in item seven of this meeting. That's all of the nominations. Madam Clerk, if you'll just verify that, correct? We'll go ahead and move to item seven, the appointments. And we'll go ahead and start with the Board of Health. And I will ask the Vice Chairman to read the nominees.
Appointed nominees.
Let me go ahead and read this, Vice Chairman. I've got it. I'm sorry. Let me, so at the October 6, 2025, Board of Commissioners, the Board of Commissioners made a nomination to fill four vacancies to the Board of Health. We have two, one physician appointment, Dr. Desai, one optometrist appointment, Dr. Ballard, and those are the only two appointments for those slots. So without objection, the following individuals are appointed to the Board of Health for the appointed slots. We have two general vacancy positions, general public vacancy positions. We have four nominees. Each Commissioner will receive two votes to fill the two vacancies on the Board of Health for the general public category. The two individuals with the most votes will move forward on the appointment. I'll go ahead and read the names, and then ask for your vote. So this is for general public representative on the Board of Health, Dr. Sam Fleishman.
Oh, we voted.
Dr. Sam, if you'd like to vote for Dr. Sam Fleishman. Dr. Sam, if you'd like to vote for Dr. Sam Fleishman. Melissa Bostic. Madam Clerk, you good?
Yes. Commissioner Tyson, I have you voting three times. I have you for Dr. Fleishman, Ms. Hamilton, and Cynthia Massey, which are your two.
Oh, I'm sorry, um, um, Madam Clerk, Ms. Ms. Massey.
Ms. Massey, and the other one?
Ms. Hamilton.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll go ahead and move forward to item B, Fayetteville County Human Relations Committee. There's four vacancies, we have five nominees, each Commissioner will receive four votes. The four individuals with the most votes will move forward for the appointment. The first name is, the first nominee is, if you'll raise your hand for each of the nominees you would like, the first nominee is Rachel Andres. The next nominee is Frederick Cutter. The next nominee is Johnny Lanthorne.
Thank you.
The next nominee is Ryan Meadows. And the next nominee is Gina Zhang. We'll go ahead and move, Madam Clerk, are you good?
Yes, thank you.
We'll go ahead and move to item C, Local Emergency Planning Committee. We have 10 vacancies, of those 10 vacancies, um, nine of them are appointed, or are positioned appointments by, by certain criteria, and we have one per, so Lou Cherry, Cumberland PIO for Broadcast Media Representative, George White for Medical Center Representative, Amy Mateo for our Local Environmental Representative, and Luis Furman with the Sheriff's Office Representative. For facilities representatives out of county, there's five vacancies, we have five individuals, Raymond Becht, Terry Chalk, Daniel Davis, Mickey Jones, Carson Walker. Without objection, the following individuals are appointed to the Local Emergency Planning Hearing no objection, that's so moved, we'll go ahead and move to the at-large position, the at-large position, there is one vacancy, there are three individuals, you, each Commission will have one vote. We'll go ahead and move to the first nominee, Brian Crackover. And Teddy Warner. Commissioners, I'll now move to the items that were added from the nominations tonight. We'll go ahead and move to Animal Services. There's three nominations, excuse me, there's three vacancies for the Animal Services Board, correction, we're not going to do Animal Services, we had an additional one, we'll go ahead and move to Child Protection Futility Prevention Team. There's one vacancy on this, and it's for a parent of a child who died prior to their 18th birthday, there's one vacancy, we have two names, the first name, the first nominee is Echo Farley. And the last one is Angel- Angelina Smith. All right, we'll go ahead and move to the next one added from tonight, Cumberland County Industrial Facilities and Pollution Control Financing Authority, we need to shorten that. There's two vacancies, we have two nominees, nominees, so without objection, Tyler Patton and Jonathan Profit are appointed to the authority. Go ahead and move to the next one added, the Farm Advisory Board, we have one vacancy on the Farm Advisory Board, it is for a representative from Natural Resources Conservation, Soil and Water, the one nominee is Kevin Riddle, and that's the only nomination for that specific representative, so without objection, Kevin Riddle is appointed to the Farm Advisory Board. Go ahead and move to the next item, Home and Community Block Care Grant Committee, we have three vacancies. The first one is Civic Representation, where we have one vacancy, there's only one nominee. So Board hearing, without, without objection, Kevin Lynch is named, is appointed as the Civic Representative to the Home and Community Block Care Grant Committee. To the older consumers, there's two vacancies, we have three individuals, each Commissioner will have two votes to fill the two vacancies. The following names, if you'll vote for, again, you have two votes. The first name is Barbara Brooks. The next name is Steve Clark. And the next name is William Tarben. Madam Clerk, are you good?
Yes, Commissioner Adams.
We'll go ahead and move to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, we have three nominations to the, to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, there are three vacancies, we have three nominations, so without objection, Brett Chivers, Stephen Harper, and Lee Spurle are appointed to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Go ahead and move to the next item, Senior Citizens Advisory Commission, we have seven vacancies on the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee, we have seven nominees, so without objection, Joyce Adams, Steve Clark, Sharon Lambert, Kevin Lynch, Dwight Palmer, Linda Telefar- Teleferio, and Westana Williams are appointed to the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee. I believe that takes us all the way through the appointments that were previously on the agenda and that we added tonight. Madam Clerk, can you verify that, please?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
All right, at this time, we'll move to item eight, the closed session, and I will entertain a motion from Vice Chairman Jones.
Yes, I move to go into closed session for attorney-client matter pursuant to NCGS 143-318.11A3, also personal matter pursuant to NCGS 143-318.11A6.
Do I get a motion? We've got a motion to move into closed session for attorney-client matters and personnel matters, been properly seconded, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
We're in closed session.
This time I'd entertain a motion from Vice Chairman Jones.
Yes, motion to come out of closed session for attorney-client matter pursuant to NCGS 143-318.11A3 and also personal matter pursuant to NCGS 143-318-11A6.
Second. Got a motion to come out of closed sessions with properly seconded any discussion or comments on the motion. Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
No actions to become in front of this board following the closed session. No further action to come in front of this board. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn by Sherwin Jones.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Got a motion to adjourn, it's properly seconded. Any questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, I'll ask for your vote. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Unanimous.
And we're adjourned.